That was certainly not an expected expense. It was my retirement gift. I happened to retire last year at that time, and then, you know, welcome to retirement. Now you've got a $10,000 bill that has to come due and be paid. Had to hire, of course, a city contractor's approved. Gentleman did the job, you know, according to specifications that are laid out by the city. One of those specifications is the necessity, because it's a main road, again, I had to assume the cost of what's called flowable fill that Mr. Brooks just alluded to. That's eight feet of flowable fill. For those of you who don't know what that product is, it's basically a concrete slurry. So there's now eight feet of concrete poured in the road over my new pipe, my new connection, that, God forbid, if it breaks again, that's going to be a huge expense to have to jackhammer eight feet of flowable fill out of that hole.
Can I just interject one thing? There's no aggregate in flowable fill, and it's completely diggable. That's why it's used. It does not need to be jackhammered. We've been using it forever, and you don't jackhammer it, sir.
Well, I think the other inequity here is that the city's own contractor, the Blue Diamond, that does all the city work, who's presently working down on Mill Street, for instance, they're not using that product. They're putting the dirt back in that came out of the road. And my personal feeling is if the dirt that's been there for over 100 years is suitable, and it's being reinstalled by an approved contractor of the city, I can't honestly see the need to put eight feet of that product in. I could see maybe three or four feet to, you know, make sure that it's compacted solid because it is a main road. But, you know, that was a $2,000 add-on just for that one product. Again, a huge amount of money. And the average person, I don't think the average taxpayer would be in for being able to shell out that kind of money. God forbid if your water line and your sewer line fail at the same time. When that road, North Main Street, was done about 25 years ago when it was repaved. So it's not a recently repaved road. And so Mr. Brooks just alluded that, you know, when it's within five years, they require the flowable fill because you want to make sure the road doesn't settle or anything else. But again, it's 25 years that road, that dirt has been sitting there. And when it's compacted properly by an approved contractor, there really shouldn't be a reason to have on that great an expense. $2,000 additional. I do have a problem with the fact that taxpayers in this city, again, it's, to me, it's a ticking time bomb. Most people aren't aware that they're responsible for the street. You know, we can't put up a toll booth there. I can't put a toll booth and say, hey, you know, pay for all the trucks and everything else that go over there because if it fails again, I've got to shell out more money to repair this problem. And as far as buying an insurance policy, which is available, my understanding, I found out after the fact, you can buy an insurance policy. I really think that's a great added expense to taxpayers. Already paying for water coming in, sewer going out, all the other expenses. We need to think about where our priorities are for the taxpayers and protection so that we're not paying and paying and paying for the same city services. That equipment in the street should be the responsibility of the city. You know, I understand why it was done in 1993. You know, if we don't have people, employees, and if our DPW is decimated, you don't have a crew to do the work. But this is 2017. Things have changed. I think the city's in a little better financial picture than we were back in that time period. And I think that, I know from watching council meetings, that all of you folks are always concerned about the taxation rate versus the services that the taxpayers are getting. And I think that it's time to reassess this. If the city of Fitchburg, which is certainly not in the same financial standing as the city of Leominster, can afford to offer that service to their residents, that they take care of the street, I think Leominster can do the same. I think it's time to revisit it. I think it's a very, very expensive proposition. And folks that are on fixed incomes, which I also know you folks are always concerned about, our retirees, our older senior citizens who are in their homes, we want them to be able to stay in their homes. If they were faced with, again, failures on two systems like that, I don't think many of them would have the wherewithal to be able to come up with $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 potentially to make those repairs. And you can't live in your house if you don't have a working sewer line and working water. Your house would be condemned. So we need to think about that. I hope you folks will think about this going forward. I understand budgets are set, but I think you need to revisit it. I think you need to understand that there's a big expense here. It's a ticking time bomb that most people are not aware of, and there are inequities the way the system is presently in place. Again, people living on main roads like I am are certainly more susceptible to the potential that there's going to be a break in the road. Just the sheer amount of traffic. Certainly somebody who lives on a dead-end road is not going to experience that, even though their lines are 100 years old as well. But it's something I hope you'll think about going forward. It's not going to help me right now, but I think it's something we need to address, again, for the betterment of the community. We need to have infrastructure, not just the water lines being lined and being clean water, but also in the sewer lines as well have to be workable. But we have to think about the cost to taxpayers overall. People are paying enough taxes. I think there's a way that this could be worked out so that at least the road work that is owned by the city, that's city property. It's not individuals' property. You know, I'm not sure what the legality of it. Obviously, it was legal to do to turn this over to us, but I just don't see it because, again, we're not a toll road here. We're not, we're not able to raise funds so that we can have a reserve that if emergency happens, you can reach into that pool of money and say, okay, no problem. We can have this fixed. So again, thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and I hope you'll take it under consideration going forward. And also put our DPW in a position where they can service the community. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Roger and Ray, I know, I wanted John to give you a little bit of a background so he'd understand what kind of questions I'm asking because I know, I think it's going to happen more often because of the age of the pipe. Why, you know, why was this, I know it was changed back in the early '90s, and I know it was lack of manpower, right? And I don't think your manpower is the whole, if I could have Roger and...
I wrote the ordinance, Councilor. I can tell you why it was passed.
I'm sorry?
I wrote the ordinance. I can tell you why it's passed if you want to know.
Okay, okay.
Well, in 1993, when Mayor Perla was in office, the law, the practice was supposed to be the same as it is now. You have common sewers, and you have common water lines. Those are the responsibility of the city. The laterals or service connections from the home, either of sewer or water, belong to the homeowner. It's always been that way. This is sometimes a draconian or dramatic cost to a homeowner, and there were complaints made to the DPW and to the mayor's office when some of these would break because typically the breaks are near the juncture out in the street despite the fact that they only service the one home. And despite the fact that they are and only belong to the homeowner, the fact that they were out in the street led many laypeople to suggest, hey, wait a minute, that's a city problem. That's not my problem. There were cases when the DPW did, in fact, fix these. Then the problem developed that there was an unequal application of the law. There were some people getting their services connected, and other, fixed rather, and other people that weren't. That led to a major problem, as one could imagine. So Mayor Perla decided, with my help as city solicitor, to make it crystal clear so that the policy would be uniform. The worst circumstance you could have is a policy that wasn't uniform. So we needed to create the...
How is the policy not uniform? I mean, somebody wasn't...
Well, because what was happening in '93 is somebody...
Somebody was making a choice where it was going to get it or wasn't.
Somebody was, some people were getting fixed, and other people weren't. And that created, as you can imagine, a significant controversy. So that controversy had to be ended, thus the ordinance, making it crystal clear that if it's the, if the service that only addresses or serves that one home, which is, I think, usually referred to as a lateral connection, that belongs to that homeowner. The common line belongs to the city, and it doesn't matter where that lateral runs, whether it runs, you know, almost often, not probably every time, but almost always, the lateral goes on to city property and to the common line. And that becomes, and has been since 1993, the responsibility of the homeowner. Now, you could, if you wanted to, as a city policy, decide to fix all of these lateral connections for the homeowners, but, you know, you're going to add that to the tab for the city of Leominster, and it's got to get paid for. So that's a, that's a policy decision. But the policy since 1993 has been that the homeowner pay for those lateral connections regardless of the fact of where they are and regardless of the fact, which in most cases, at least a portion of it goes on to the public way. That's been the policy in effect since then.
But there was also, if I recall, in the Perla administration, because of budget constraints, over half, close to half of the DPW that was laid off.
Yeah.
So the manpower was also taken away from the ability to fix these.
There were some that, I have to tell you candidly, there were some that were getting fixed by city forces. And that came to the attention of certain people, and it caused a big controversy, as it should have.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree that you can't do some and not the others. I mean, it has to be all or nothing.
That was the background of the ordinance.
But the, so the ordinance could essentially be fixed if we chose to have it fixed on even equity of type of road somebody's on. I mean, that could be, right? Could that be, I mean...
You can change it any way you want as long as you understand that there's going to be a cost with that. And that would, in water and sewer, that goes definitely to the rate structure. I mean, what we do now with replacing mains and doing upgrades on facilities still doesn't catch up on the backlog of streets that, you know, have both water distribution issues and wastewater collection issues. So you would look at an impact on your rate structure. There's no question about that.
Also, Fitchburg does not replace water main. They don't fix their own hydrants. They don't fix their own breaks. Maybe they fix that piece of service line that's in the road, but they don't do water main and save the city 50% of the cost. I mean, that's, you know, we thought that was more bang for the buck to us to do our own water pipe.
No question that it's a difficult set of circumstances. We all can see it for what it is because it's an old system. Your sewer system's over 125 years old, as well as your water system. So, you know, over the last couple of years, as all of you know, we've gone from trying to do areas where we have more breaks to dealing with areas where there are water quality issues and sewer issues, as we did last year with a couple of streets that we changed out from what we had originally planned on doing to address concerns about water quality issues that residents had when they came down and spoke to all of you. So we've tried to be responsive to that and made that more of a priority than the break issue by trying to deal with those as best we can.
Old sewer line is what they call clay pipe, which is basically china. It's been in the ground 100 years, and every road takes that vibration, and at some point in time it fails. And 100 years is probably a pretty good bang for your buck out of a pipe of that nature.
Okay. Councilor Schaffler-Zephyr, I think I saw you here a few minutes ago.
Thank you. This is actually a question from Mr. DeChico. I'm just curious, where was the break that you had to deal with? Was it in the middle of the road or between the road and your home?
It was actually in the street. So the, it was actually the connection point right where it goes into the main, where it drops into the main. That's where it cracked. And just one other thing I want to point out because I forgot about this. This is really important. The insurance policy that's available, which you can, it's about $120, $25 a year, that covers your sewer line and your water lines, your water mains, is only available to people who have owner-occupied properties. So in my case, in our case, my family owns three properties, all adjacent to each other on both sides of my house, actually. And one of those was our original homestead, family homestead, and it's presently a rental property. But even though we have new lines, we can't get insurance for that. So again, I understand that, you know, an insurance company probably would not want to cover a multi-tenement property because, you know, people have a tendency to abuse the sewer lines in particular. But I think that when it's a, basically a two, what could be like a two-tenement home in French Hill or, you know, our home, I think that there ought to be a way to negotiate with the insurer, insurance company, to take on some cost or liability and allow private homeowners to be able to at least get a policy. If we're not going to remedy this from the standpoint of the city taking back responsibility for what I believe rightfully should be the city's responsibility, something in the street, I don't have a problem fixing something in my, on my property. When that road, when I alluded to that the road was redone 25 years ago, at that time, because there was state funding involved, there was an opportunity for a betterment project that you could have a reduced rate to replace your water lines because most of those homes, being over 100 years old, had lead pipes, steel pipes. We chose to put all new copper lines in. So we connect, we paid for the connection from the street at the time right to the house. So, you know, we have invested, many taxpayers have invested, and upgraded the lines. But as I say, when you can't even get insurance for it, you know, you're really stuck. I mean, it's really a problem. And as I say, it's one thing for someone who's, you know, gainfully employed and maybe can afford to absorb this somehow, some way, but for folks that are retired, I mean, our senior citizens, I'm really concerned about their ability to be able to stay in their properties when they're faced with a situation, what could be a catastrophic failure. And many of them may not even be aware of the insurance program. And who knows if they can afford the insurance program? $125 doesn't sound like a whole lot to most people, but again, to somebody on a fixed income, it's another insurance payment. It's another policy that they'd have to cover, and they just may not have the wherewithal to do that. But goodness, if they end up with a, you know, $6,000, $7,000, $8,000 bill, that's catastrophic to the average homeowner, I think.
Did I, excuse me, did I understand you to say that you had replaced that line or that connection 25 years ago?
Yes, we replaced the water lines 25 years ago. We did not replace the sewer lines.
Okay.
We put brand-new copper lines, and all our water lines were replaced to the street. And, you know, and as I say, I had previously replaced on my property, right to the sidewalk connection to the sewer line, was all brand-new pipes, all plastic pipes. So it wasn't, it wasn't any failure there. It was, it was, as Mr. Racine said, we're talking about old clay pipe, roots infiltrate them, you know, but the vibration alone, you know, is what would ultimately, you know, makes them fail. It's going to happen.
Thank you. Ray, the particular main that he's talking about, is that right in the middle of North Main Street? Does it run right in the middle?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The insurance policy, actually, I have a printout from them. This is a company that is purely independent, not related to the city. We just keep the information that we have these pamphlets you can give to homeowners. And currently, there are 7,857 people in Leominster that are enrolled. I believe it's $67 for water and $67 for sewer per year. And to date, since these guys came on board, they've done 204 repairs, which some of them are total, the homeowner pays nothing. And to the tune of $300,944 has gone to help out the residents in town. So like I said, when this insurance came to us, I didn't know what to think about it. But the people that I spoke with are very happy with it. And if you fall into their criteria, I think they'll go up to a six-family home. I think Mr. DeChico is right. You have to be owner-occupied. I'm not certain on that. I don't know all the ins and outs with the thing because, like I said, it's not supported or endorsed by the city. I just give these out to people that are interested in it. And maybe we could publicize more that this is out there, but a lot of people have taken advantage of it and had some really good success.
They've been sent out in water bills, haven't they?
Yeah, they do. This gets sent, actually, it does. So a lot of people really aren't paying attention to it because I think they do send this out quarterly or every, or twice a year.
Twice a year or something like that.
Yeah. So the thing is out there, and I have my guys, if they go to a house and there's a sewer or water situation, we give them this. So they're aware at that time that it may or may not be too late, but the thing is out there and available to them to help them.
Roger, is that what Bruce Toby originally started?
Correct. And one thing while we're on that topic is if people have iron pipe services that come through their foundation into their basement, they should look at doing some kind of replacement or get on the insurance only because those old pipes are, you know, much older than the copper service pipes that are going into the city's properties now. And I would say that their service is probably compromised a little bit. They probably have a little less water volume going into the house. You only need pinhole leaks, small leaks to compromise the service to the house, and it'd be worth everybody taking a look at what they've got coming through the foundation wall just before the meter in your basement, just as a heads up.
And what we do too is we'll advertise, say if we go in Merritt Street, we replace the water main. We go through everybody's service connection, and we let them know your service is old, it's iron pipe, now's the time to replace it. So we've got a pretty good handle on how to approach. It's just you can't always force people to do the right thing.
Usually the break occurs in the street, right? I mean, isn't that typical?
No. I mean, a lot of times people will have landscaping in front of their property, and you'll see, and even in plastic pipe, you'll see roots from a tree be able to access the sewer line. And once it starts to just build up, whether it's just with a little bit of grease, debris, whatever, then you can have a blockage.
And the freeze-thaw cycle moves pipe, and once it's brittle, iron brittle, it moves it up, it breaks off. Same thing with the clay service connections.
One thing for people to speak to what Mr. DeChico just talked about, if you're a homeowner and you are on a fixed income and you really are limited with what you have available, CDBG will help you with an emergency situation as a homeowner with water and sewer because, again, like you said, the house is uninhabitable without water or sewer. So if they need something, they should go down to the planning department and check with them and see what's available in their particular condition because it depends on your income. But there are income parameters, and if they qualify, the CDBG program can help them alleviate that problem.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any, any questions? Councilor Schaffler-Zephyr?
Yes, this is just a quick one for Ray. I had mentioned earlier something about Upper West Street, and in looking at, I think you, the water main had been replaced?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not on the map.
Brand-new 30-inch pipe.
But it's, okay, but it's not read on this map.
It was done before '15.
It was done before?
Yep.
Well, this is since 2012.
I'm sorry, excuse me, 12. It was done before '12.
Okay. Do you have any idea when? I can call, you know what?
Christmas and, well, right? Christmas time of, I want to say that was, well, I was, my office was 106 Marion Ave, so it was between 1999 and 2006. I want to say it was around 2000, 2001.
Upper West was replaced?
Yeah, we had three breaks, there are major breaks.
Right.
We lost water in Christmas.
We lost water. That's 60% of the city supply.
Right.
So we replaced, we abandoned the two mains that are in there and put a brand-new 30 in there. So that cement lined, and that line should be clear as a whistle. So if you continue to have issues, we can help you check it, and internal plumbing or an old water tank might be a cause. Or like we were saying, your old iron service, I'm not sure what it is.
Right. Thank you.
But that's something to look for.
Thank you.
All right.
2001.
Yeah. I have this report from the Safety Valve, if anybody's interested in taking a look at it to find out what in fact, who was on it and how they helped, and I don't know if that helps anybody. You can take a look at it if you like. Thanks. I have a couple of these, I'll leave. You guys can check out these two. I mean, they come in the mail, I know because I get them. And like I said, we give them out every time we go to a property that there's an issue. So we notify people that there is help out there.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Are we all set? Okay.
One comment. I tend to agree with Mr. DeChico regarding traffic issues and the impact on this. And it's a policy question, I think, that we should raise and take a look at. I'm on Marion Ave, so I'm dealing with clay that's probably as old as the street, right? In my area. I had to replace my water line three years ago, I think, last week. And what happened was when they started doing work next door to me, you could see my pipe vibrating in the basement. It was just hanging on by the thin of its teeth to begin with, and it did snap shortly after that. So I was fortunate, I had the Safety Valve insurance, and I was one of the recipients. It worked very well. It paid the entire thing. I think I may have had to pay a small fee for the water meter replacement to the city, which was a nominal amount at the time. I think I ended up paying like $25 or $35. I think that was the standard. But the sewer line is still in question, it's just a matter of time for that. I would like to see somehow, I know you don't have a lot of time, but to, you know, over a period of time, take a look at main roads. I mean, you should be able to have a pretty good handle on some of the ones that might be in question, like North Main Street, for example. And, you know, maybe the legislation stands to be amended to the point where maybe there's some kind of prorating for assistance. It may be very limited, but on the main streets, it might be something that would be appropriate. So for example, I want to take a look at a street that has very nominal traffic, just the homeowners and visitors, for example, but on the, on the roads that are getting a few thousand cars, 20,000 cars a day, as a matter of fact, you know, they're taking a beating. There's no truck exclusion there, so, you know, they're getting the whole thing. So the tendency for something to let go, you might be able to identify that better than anyone, where those main streets, where those, where those sensitive areas happen to be. So a North Main Street, like a Marion Ave, like a West Street, like a Maple Ave, like a Washington, North Main, Main.
You just did it.
You know, Prospect Street. And what happens is maybe that's rated as an A. So what happens if there's a situation for a homeowner, you know, maybe, maybe it's a 50/50 kind of a deal to take some relief from them, or maybe we have a plan set up. The CDBG thing works. I had a situation right in my own neighborhood where there was a gentleman who was a retired veteran, and what happened was he lost his water line. It was a really cold time of the year, and through the help of CDBG, they were able to resolve it for him in a timely fashion. And that is a zero-interest loan until he refinances the house or sells the property. So it's a really, it was a really good deal. But the CDBG has extreme limitations on who qualifies and who doesn't. And I thought at one point, there was a request made by this council to take a look at the other people so they don't slip through the cracks. And that would be, maybe there would be an assessment on their water sewer bill over a period of 10 years or whatever it happens to be in order to make sure that everyone's taken care of. So if there's a possibility you could investigate that feasibility, you know, that might relieve some of the, some of the issue as well.
How would you subsidize that out of the rate payer's portion?
Well, you guys would be able to make that determination. You know, if it's not appropriate, I understand that. But I mean, if it's something that you might be able to take a look at and say, there's a small percentage that fall into that category, so we could, you know, we could be requesting out of one-time revenue source or through the water sewer, I understand the account and the limitations in there. And I'm not trying to prohibit you from doing like Allen Street like you did last year, but maybe there's an Allen Street that we have extra money for that's not needed this year, and so that extra money could be recognized as a situation like this. Isolated, but it's a real problem. Fool for thought, just a discussion. Thank you.
Did I see someone else in the audience? Since I let someone already speak, if you want to as well, Mr. Kowski, do you?
I was just, Holly Kowski, I was just going to say, ask you if you still, one winter, I lived on Arlington Street first. You guys actually had it come out and connect me to my neighbor's house.
Correct.
And pose to keep me running all winter long. I just wondered, do you still do that?
Against our better judgment, we do. It freezes.
Yeah. There are a number of issues with that. Like Ray said, freezing is number one. Sometimes you have neighborhood kids that might go in and shut the spigot off, and you don't know it.
I'm extorted.
There are a number of things that happen, but it's an accommodation because it's just difficult that time of year.
I always keep coming out of the road.
You should be all set now, right?
Oh, yeah. Can we have a second?
Okay. All set?
All righty. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we have a 6:45 PM informational meeting with interim Chief Goldman regarding petition 7-18, which is in regards to no parking any time on the east side of Main Street from Marion Ave to Columbia Street. I also believe, Councilor Badanza, did you request that the postmaster come as well?
Yes, Mr. President, as it impacts the post office, I did ask the postmaster to attend the meeting. And Mr. Hoy, I believe is present.
Okay, good. So we'll recognize you as well if there's a time, you know, appropriate time for comment. Okay, so Chief Goldman, we have a petition in and I think there might be a little bit of question about it. So if you want to explain the petition and then we'll go into some questions.
Well, the petition is to permanently make the four spaces across from the post office no parking. And the reason, the reason for that was the jaywalking that occurs. Those spaces are only used for the post office. Nobody parks here to go anyplace else and one hundred percent of the cars that park there jaywalk. Nobody goes to the light, nobody pushes the button. It is a, what we consider, the police department considers a public safety hazard. There is no other way to combat the jaywalking. I think this council's heard from me before, very rarely will you ever hear me say, if we don't do something, there's a potential of somebody getting killed. I'm saying that about that location. People park there and they simply step out into the roadway. They force traffic to stop, hopefully it stops. And the traffic that's stopping has a ripple effect both ways. That's one of the worst intersections as far as gridlock goes. In downtown, which is being studied right now to revamp it, it just ripples back all the way to Pleasant Street when people stop. And it's continuous all day and it's obviously worse at, in the morning, at noon time and in the evening. And we spend almost a year talking about this and watching it and what can we do? And the solution to the jaywalking problem there is to get rid of the parking spaces because since we put the barriers up as an experiment, there has been zero jaywalking. I mean, it proves the point. There's no other way to solve the jaywalking. We've talked about fencing to channelize people towards both intersections, to use the crosswalks. That would be the only other possible solution and you can't do it because you have to put the fencing out in the roadway because they just step out into the car, into the traffic. We've been in conversation with Enterprise Bank and they've changed their layout a little bit. They're going to put a fence up along the roadway so that somebody that's parking at Enterprise Bank to do bank in, wants to run across the street to the post office is gonna, we're going to try and channelize them to the crosswalks. So they're not just walking out of the parking lot into the roadway. And that's the, that's the reason for the request for no parking. And again, I don't see another solution.
All right, Council Badanza.
So Chief, the Columbia building was built in eighteen ninety-two and my guess is there was probably parking in front of it when cars were still, were first being in widespread use.
Correct. I assume.
It has been parking there ever since until it burned down. And since the construction of the new building, there's been a temporary parking ban.
Correct.
So why today, after more than a century, we talking about a parking ban and a jaywalking problem that existed for who knows how many decades?
Well, first, we've been, again, we've been talking about it for quite a long time, the jaywalking there, for quite a long time. And the jaywalking, counselor, simply gets worse with the volume. The volume of people, the volume of people using the post office. It simply gets worse and the traffic doesn't decrease in the city of Leamester. It increases almost on a daily basis. There's some fifteen thousand or seventeen thousand cars a day going through there.
Well, the post office is cramped for parking, there's no question about that. Post office has been there since nineteen twenty-eight. I mean, you know, I've had constituents contact me about the temporary ban because it's difficult to get to the post office. And, you know, this jaywalking problem didn't, didn't happen last month or last year. If it's been happening, it's been happening, I'm sure, for decades.
Well, I, I don't know, I certainly would tell you that there's been jaywalking. I don't know it's to the level that it is. That is a major gridlock problem there and the jaywalking is part of it. And I can't, I can't explain to you or tell you what any other chief decided to do. This ordinance was written under my instructions. This was my decision to do this. I can't tell you what anybody else's, maybe nobody else had the, wanted to take on the problem.
Did you get, did you get input from the bank on this?
We spoke to Enterprise about it.
And they contacted you or you contacted them?
We spoke in a technical review meeting together. I spoke to them.
So.
They had no problem with it.
And how did this topic come up in the technical review meeting?
I said to them, we're probably going to make no parking on those four spaces and I'd like to see some fencing and a conversation with you people about it. They had no problem with it.
Did they in fact have an interest in eliminating the parking?
I don't remember specifically, but they did, they had no, had absolutely no objection to it.
So you don't remember whether they had an interest in whether?
They didn't, no, no. I brought the conversation up with them. It was not part of the, they didn't know anything about the parking or not parking there.
Did you contact the postmaster?
I did not speak to the post office.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions for the chief regarding seven dash eighteen? Mister, is it Hoy? I think I spoke to you before. Sure, you may, yeah, absolutely.
Are you all set with me?
If you want to wait there, just in case there's any questions, absolutely.
Good evening, Councilor President, Mr. and Mrs. Counselor, ladies and gentlemen, Police Chief Leamester. I'm here for one, one thing and one thing only. I'd just like to find out a little bit more about this permanent parking ban. I'm a little perturbed by it. As Councilor Badanza correctly pointed out, this is the decade problem, the jaywalking. As a matter of fact, when I first became the postmaster in Leamester in two thousand and nine, I first approached the mayor, still a mayor, not Mayor Hawke, I'm from the city of Gardner, so, it's Mayor. And we talked about these issues. And I believe that he may have written a couple of articles in the newspaper as well and talk about the jaywalking problems. So to me, I don't know how, I'm not a police officer, so I have no idea how to enforce the law or the ordinance. But to say, to took those four parking spot away and then jaywalking would never exist again, I am not so sure I can agree with that. It's simply because of one thing. People saying, wow, it's only parking for a post office only. And I simply could not agree with that either. People can actually park over there and I seen people going to YMCA all the time and there's a couple of gift shops down the street where they couldn't find parking in front of it. They walk across a little, is it Columbia, is it Columbia Avenue? To go to those places as well. So absolutely, the post office benefit by the parking. There's no doubt in my mind, I'm not denying that. And the post office itself is in a cocoon that to a place that we have no, no more way to expand. So for decades, since nineteen twenty-eight, we only have so many limited parkings from both sides of the building. So we were very grateful the city of Leamester having parking spaces in the front and across the street to allow our constituents to come up and do business with us. And in the same token, the same constituents that come and do business with us, it's the same constituents than you are that you serve. So in a lot of way, when, when, when the temporary parking ban came, yes, there are some customers being inconvenienced. And let me just, let me just explain a little briefly about how the traffic pattern goes. Like I said, you probably did a lot of surveys, chief, and you know about, you know, fifteen thousand cars.
I know about the traffic.
Absolutely, I'm sure you do. That's why I don't, I don't dispute that. You have the credentials on that. What I'm saying is when customers and constituents coming down from the central street area, going north towards twelve, they want to stop and do business in downtown, they have no avenue to park. They have no avenue to park. As soon as you cross that Marion Ave, Columbia Avenue, there's no parking all the way with the four parking spots is now gone. For the customer, for the postal service, since they cannot make a left turn onto Marion Avenue because they said no left turn, they can't even get into the parking lot if they wanted to because it's against the law to make a left turn. But if they go straight, how they even try to attempt to do any business with anybody on the other end? They can't. So what I, what I observed is a lot of my customers or a lot of constituents, you know, after they pass the red light or the green light, instead of trying to come, drove or drive all the way down to wherever you can make a left turn and come back in again, they're making a left turn into the driveway of the post office and try to come back out and try to find parking and go to the right to go to Marion Avenue. To me, that is an accident waiting to be happened. There's so many close calls in every given day because people have just decided to cut right into the left, go right into the post office driveway, whether without hesitation, seeing the truck coming out or not, they don't care. There's only four or five parkings. It is awkward. So what they can do is they'll back up to the road. Think about this. Driving forward, at least you have control of the traffic pattern. When the cars are trying to back up in, onto the main street, which Mr. Mike, unfortunately, the exit way is also there. So they have cars coming out, we have customers coming back out and then we have traffic coming down Main Street. Think about the consequences. So to me, jaywalking is an issue. It was an issue many, many years ago in Canada. They don't have any issues ever since. I visited Canada more, a lot of times. I love Montreal, I love Quebec. Nobody jaywalk because they enforced it. They enforced the policy. That's the key. We can talk all we want for the past thirty years, forty years, city of Leamester jaywalking problem. If you don't enforce the policy, it will never go away. Sure, I don't deny it. You've got, you've got four more cars across the street from the postal service. Yes, you are going to have chances of people trying to cross the road and I don't disagree with that. As a matter of fact, I would suggest that, you know, the pedestrian walking from both side, maybe they can put some color painting on it and make it a little brighter. Maybe put that little sign, the little guy that said crossing the road costs you two hundred dollars fine. Maybe put it in the middle of the road so people have no choice but to drive slower. And which brought up another problem. I honestly don't know what the speed limit on Main Street is. I honestly don't. I came to work every day from North Main Street to come down to Hell of Lion Hospital, get off the Route Two. One time I got off Route thirteen. I came up to Crown Fight Chicken, I'm pretty sure you know what it is, try to cut up here. I see no speed limit signs. All I see is no parking signs. So for any folks that want to drive and pass over twenty, twenty-five miles, where's the judgment? Right? I, to me, you want the downtown to be, to blossom. You want the business to stay. You want Allen, Allen Company doing well. You want the, you know, the insurance company doing well. You want all those small businesses doing well. We have, it's discourage people driving fast. I think driving faster factor is affecting the most traffic accident, not the people jaywalking. It doesn't help. It doesn't help the problem. There's two problems here. Your people speeding over thirty minutes, thirty miles an hour. They see the green light turn yellow, they think they can go faster. Okay? They just speed right through, sped right through. As a matter of fact, and that is a, that in combinations, with the speed control, there's no speed control. I haven't, I have to drive all the way down to Central Street, one thirty-five Central to see a, a speed limit sign for twenty-five miles.
You need to look closer, Mr. Postmaster, because all the proper signs are there. It's twenty-five miles per hour.
Okay. No, I, no, like I said, I probably missed it. I probably missed it. You know, I mean, that's what, that's not what I do for a living. But I can assure you that I have seen, I have seen motor vehicles travel more than twenty-five miles on that area, in particular when the yellow light comes on and everybody speed. So to me, yeah, jaywalking absolutely is an issue. Speeding is an issue. Parking is an issue. All I'm saying is if you're going to insist on permanent no parking across the post office, at least give us some alternatives somewhere along the line allowing our customers or your constituents to have, able to make a left turn somehow into Marion Avenue to come into our parking lot. Otherwise, we're not serving anybody any purposes. That's just my only opinion. I mean, I'm, I'm just one little guy. So thank you very much for your time. You have any questions for me?
I have one question.
Sure, Counsel Marsha.
How much parking does your, does your site actually allow? Because you keep alluding to Marion Ave, but fifty percent of those parking spaces, don't they belong to the house next door?
No, they don't.
They're all yours?
They're all mine. As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, I have to go over to WIC every other day and politely to ask them, you know, your customer really shouldn't be parking in the parking lot and I don't want to be a jerk about it. I know they have children, you know, they're getting help, they're getting assistance. I want them to get the services. So I will never say, okay, I'm going to call the cops and give you a ticket because this is my parking area. But I don't do that.
So from your space all the way up to the intersection of Church Street, there's no, there's no parking on either side of the road?
No, there isn't. There isn't.
Okay, so going into your driveway off of North Main Street, how many parking spaces do you have on the left right there for, for customers?
You mean not Marion Avenue, on the other side?
Right.
That's I got four regular spaces and a handicap.
Okay, all right. And then?
And I got eight on the other side, so I got a total of thirteen.
And the only parking that is allowed, you'd have to go up in front of Carter Park?
I'm sorry?
You'd have to go all the way up to Carter Park to have any parking off?
Yeah, right now, if you, if you, if you disband that four parking spaces and permanently ban it, you have to drive past that park, absolutely, sir.
Right, okay.
You know, St. Leo's Church across the street, there's, there was about five or six parking. But then for any customer that want, even want to remotely close to downtown, they have to walk about what, quarter of a mile, Police Chief? It's a quarter of a mile from St. Leo to corner of Marion Avenue? How far is the distance?
It's probably less than a quarter of a mile.
Okay, all right. And now, I want to mention one thing.
It certainly isn't the six, seven feet they have to walk across the street.
Right. I, I want to mention one more thing too. When this car backing off of my, my, my parking driveway, one hundred Main Street is elderly people living. They love to walk the post office. They love to walk the post office. Six inches of snow, twelve inches of snow, they beat my carriers. They are out on the road, walking to my office and buy a stamp just to say hello, just to get out of the building. With all these cars backing off of my driveway, I'm telling you, it's like a Monte Carlo Speedway there for them. So they are walking with walkers. A lot of people just couldn't help it. I just want, I just want to ask for your, your, you know, your opinion on this and hopefully you put everything into consideration. Like I said, I thank you for your time and thank you for your time, chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Counsel Shalpas-Effer?
Yep, I do. Chief, have patrolmen written any fines? Have they given any tickets for jaywalking?
Do we do patrols for jaywalking or any fines for jaywalking? No.
Okay.
We're a little busy.
No, I understand that. But, you know, if it's a really big problem and if we're concerned about people getting run over in front of the post office.
Can I address some of the postmaster's comments?
Sure.
Sure, that's what we're here.
Number one is speeding is not a major factor in crashes in this city. Ninety-five percent of the accidents, if not more in this city, are volume and inattention. There was some myth or some, why, old wise tale that speeding in this city causes accidents. The vast majority of crashes in this city are low-speed crashes. The vast majority of accidents in this city are rear-end accidents. There is no speeding problem in that stretch of Main Street and anybody that drives it knows that. There is no speeding issue there. The issue in that area is volume. The volume is amazing. And part of the problem with the volume is Mr. Mike's post office that probably should have been moved forty years ago and two or three intersections very closely placed together in which the timing of the lights is continuously looked at to try and ease the issues there. But it's a done deal, okay? The volume in the city is simply too high, okay? There is no speeding issue in that stretch. There's nothing going on like that. Secondly, this is a matter of convenience versus public safety, okay? And it's the council's job to weigh that, not mine. I simply made the proposal that the only way to combat this is by making no parking. It's the council's job to decide to weigh public safety, in my opinion, versus convenience at the post office. I've lived in Leamester for fifty-five years. There were two satellite post offices in my lifetime. One down at Esper's Drugs, one up at Barone's in North Leamester. And a lot of these problems didn't exist and there aren't no satellite post offices. And I would, I would suggest to you that that's the post office's fault. Not, not the city of Leamester, not the police departments, not the drivers in Leamester, but the post office's fault. The federal government spends no money on their post offices, okay? I mean, and that's, look, it's been there for ninety years. It has outgrown its location, okay? The sole reason for doing this is to combat the jaywalking because we believe it's dangerous and people are going to get hurt, okay? What was the other thing I want to say? Now I lost my train of thought. But again, it's not the police department, and it is your position, not the police department's position, to worry about the convenience of getting to the post office. It's my job, it's my job to be concerned about public safety. And if this council, with all due respect, wants me to divert police resources to jaywalking that can be solved, and we have proved it can be solved by the four months of those who've been there, if you want me to divert police resources to jaywalking, you're going to have to find somebody else to run the police department because that's not going to happen, okay? We have way too many other issues. Almost every counselor here has spoken to me. Counsel Fekley and I spoke about traffic issues up in North Leamester. You have no time in a city of fifty thousand people with a hundred and eighty miles of streets and twenty-five square miles to worry about jaywalking when I can solve it by making no parking spaces. Permanent problems deserve permanent solutions. Not putting a band-aid on it with, with officers being tied up doing jaywalking patrol. Not putting a, a Band-Aid on it with, with officers being tied up doing jaywalking patrol. Alright, I need to start, I'm gonna have to start the meeting, so if we got more questions, then we'll take, we gotta take a recess for a hearing and another, uh, uh, the public forum anyway, so. At this time, the regular meeting of the City Council for October twenty-third, twenty-seventeen will now come to order. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I will now take a roll call of the honourable members of the Leamester City Council, beginning with Councilor Frida.
Present.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Fekley.
Present.
Councilor Badanta.
Present.
Councilor Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Marshian.
Present.
And I am present. There are eight members present this evening. Does the Vice President have any records to approve this evening, Councilor Fekley?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the City Council, October tenth, two thousand seventeen, meeting. I find them to be in order and ask them that they be placed on file.
Okay, so the Vice President finds the City Council minutes of October tenth of twenty-seventeen to be in order. Is there any questions or comments on those? Seeing none, uh, those will be placed on file, and at this time I will ask if there's a motion?
Motion for recess?
In a second. And all those in favor of recess, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the council now stands in recess, and we will continue. Councilor Fekley, I think I saw your hand before we started the meeting.
Yes. So Chief, I absolutely understand what you're talking about, about those parking spaces. I don't use the post office as much as I used to because I can do so at work. But, you know, years ago when I had the kids and I was going down, I mean, I can just remember it always being that way. You know, I think I was probably one of the jaywalkers too. And you'd park the car, and the kids would get out of the car, and everybody's flying around, and, and it's, it's really a difficult situation. And I'm wondering though, now, the city might have had an opportunity after the Columbia Hotel, maybe this is hindsight, um, burnt down and that, you know, area was open for like, parallel parking, or, you know, that sideways parking?
Angle the parking?
Angle parking. I mean, would that make a difference?
Angle parking generally allows you to put more parking spaces. But again, if you're gonna put them on that side of the street, it doesn't solve the problem of people parking and jumping out.
There's not enough room there now.
And honestly, God, I have to, I have to take a deep breath if I go to Clinton on Main Street and I angle park there and to back out scares the heck out of me.
Cause they're backing out, so that, alright, yeah, I thought, I would ask, but...
Yeah, that's above my pay grade, I think, for what to do with that lot.
And then, I would suppose at one point you could take a left onto Merrim Ave?
That is not, that, 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 a left onto Merrim from?
From going north of Main?
Oh, going north. That has been no left turn in my recollection, and I started driving in nineteen seventy-eight in the city of Leamester. I don't recall that being a left turn. I mean, I, I think probably the ordinance might tell you, because it's, you have to have an ordinance for that, and there is an ordinance. You would, I, my, my professional opinion is you would increase car accidents by doing that.
You would?
Yeah. The solution to the, to the problem with the post office is more parking. And it's not, uh, it's not anything that's gonna be solved. The postmaster said that. It's nothing that's gonna be solved. You need satellite post offices to pull it away from the, the center. That's my opinion.
I remember Veroni's, that's where we used to go to. Um, so, I'm wondering what the reason was for just, for no left-hand turn on Merrim Ave, but that's
Beyond my, that's beyond my recollection.
Long historical memory, okay? Alright, thank you.
Question, Councilor, I saw Councilor Dombrowski's hand.
Just, yeah, Chief, just one question. How long has the temporary parking ban been in place?
I did that, I think in, um, I did that in around July. Around July. And for the record, I've been asking the mayor for almost a year to, to, to make that no parking.
So it's been about four months?
Yeah, it's been about four months, and, um...
Does that include all four spaces?
All four spaces.
Okay. Okay. Nothing further, Mr. President.
Okay, Councilor Marshian?
Was there a, Chief, was there a discussion regarding Columbia Street? And possibly moving those four spaces onto Columbia Street, wrapping around the corner?
No, there hasn't been any discussion about that, but it's a good idea.
Well...
But again, there, there has been some conversation about, um, changing the flow of traffic on Columbia and the short end of Merrim and, and all that. There has been that railroad square there. There's been some conversation about that. But it, it hasn't come to any fruition yet.
The traffic impact, it, it's Columbia Street, correct?
Columbia Ave, I think it is.
That wraps around?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the traffic impact on that street is substantially lower than the traffic flow on Main Street. I think we can all agree to that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's more of a cut-through to the neighborhood, or to get to the businesses in the back?
Yeah, well, it's a cut, it's a cut-through for a lot of stuff.
Yeah, it is, it is, but I, but I obviously it's like apples and oranges as far as the impact. So what would happen is if you move those four spaces down Columbia, and you allow that to happen, uh, potentially, for the people coming in from that, the opposite side of town, the Central Street area, Merrim Ave area, for example, it would be a natural place for them to park. There'd be no need to jaywalk because your crosswalk is right there.
Correct.
So I think that discussion has to happen with Enterprise Bank. I'm a little bit surprised when I hear about fencing coming up to the road.
No, 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 to the sidewalk.
To the sidewalk. I'm surprised to hear that. And I'm, I'm not sure what the, what the parking plan is and where the curb cut will be, but it seems to me that could be something that we can negotiate with them in order to take away some of the, the bite out of parking in front of the building itself. I, I'd like to see that discussion happen.
I, I, I don't...
When in nineteen ninety-nine, the Leamester, the Leamester downtown community in nineteen ninety-nine had over twenty percent vacancy, and I'll say it was probably closer to thirty, right on Main Street itself. And rent was cheap. They couldn't find tenants. You know, the malls were thriving and businesses were just going down the tubes, left and right. If you think about what was down there, what's there today, it's like, there's, there's a lot of changeover.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it was a big deal for the philanthropists involved with the Downtown Association to find one parking space in their Tim's Diner. One. It was a big deal. And we carved, carved that out on Mechanic Street, just before you get to the back of the woodblock building, city parking lot. There were actually, there weren't, we redesigned it with the help of Inaugural Engineering, and were able to put one parking space in, and the parking space was a big deal to downtown. I have a tendency to, uh, agree with the gentleman from the post office, you know, and on the opposing viewpoint, that that parking there is not just for the post office. It, it may appear to be that way today because we don't have any retail like we did coming out of the Columbia building with G I T. You know, you had Edward, Edward Jones, you had the pizza chef, you had a few different, you know, you had a few, it's Centerland Enterprises was on the corner. So I mean, there was some real foot traffic going into the building, so we didn't notice. But right now, for the most part, when you park there, you, you go across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Or you might go to the, the old Recreation Building for religious type of thing. But for the most part, it is for the post office, and I, I'd hate to be in a situation where the city would do anything that would be detrimental. There are new post offices going up. This one here is there. I don't wanna cripple them with limiting the parking. The traffic flow is key. Uh, the ability for people traveling to there, it's very limited. You know, they either park there or they don't. That's what it comes down to. It's just too hard to mitigate. You know, turning it to private property to make a U-turn and try to get a space in front. You don't know if it's gonna be there anyway. So I just, I'd like, I'd be curious if you had a conversation, or could have a conversation with Enterprise Bank for the city, and be able to pick up four spaces. So I'd be more apt to work, work in a little better direction if the parking was off the side there, forcing your situation with the resolve being, you know, no jaywalking.
Well, I don't know that there's, as far as I know, there's parking allowed on Columbia now.
Well, how many, well, well...
Hasn't changed, and, and we certainly...
How many, how many parking spaces do we have?
Uh, I, 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 I mean, I have to...
Half dozen?
Probably, yeah, and I don't...
This can't be done?
And we certainly would have no problem with the DBW painting them so that they're, so that they're more delineated and they understand what's going on.
Alright.
Um, and again, I think in the back of my mind, Columbia was, well, why aren't they just parking there anyway? And again, uh, the issue is, in some cases, and I, I'll apologize in advance for this comment, in some cases, it's just laziness. Because if I can whip right up, up front of the post office, and I can step, and I can cross a, a twenty-two-foot road and throw my mail in the mailbox and get back in, I don't need to park around the, the corner on Columbia and then have to do the loop, right, and come back out at the light.
Right.
And, um, it, so it's simply easier. And, and again, it doesn't solve my, it doesn't solve my jaywalking problem.
So at your, at your site plan meeting, does Enterprise Bank have access with a curb cut off of Columbia that's also impacting the current parking?
First, I believe that's a done deal. Obviously, they're building the building and everything's been approved.
So is the answer yes?
I would have to go in and, and see the plan. I haven't seen it.
Where, well, you were at the meeting. Where are they accessing their parking?
Again, this was a technical review meeting before the, before the planning board's, is finalized?
Well, if I, I'll go on the record in the meeting, but basically if they have displaced the parking space, they need to replace it. That's what they do.
I believe...
That's what you're supposed to do.
I believe, I believe ingress and egress into, um, ingress and egress into Enterprise Bank is on the backside. So it would be on the east side. It's not on Columbia.
Well, there were parking spaces across from Dick's Barbershop. Are we losing any?
I think we are. Yeah, I think we are. I'd have to take another look at the plan.
Thank you.
Council, Councilor Badanta?
I'd like to make a point through the postmaster, which I think is, he could support. Um, if I could ask Mr. Hoy. Um, as a frequent user of the US Postal Service, I know that the nature of your business has changed pretty dramatically over the last several years, and you're now more of a package service than a, than a traditional letter service, and I know oftentimes I wait in line with people mailing packages, and, you know, I mean, a, a large portion of your business is people coming to the post office where they can't drop letters into a collection box or at a store or someplace, or leave in their home. They're coming there with packages, correct?
Absolutely, because, um, I'm agreeing with the police chief when he mentioned about the jaywalking part of it, and I'm, and I'm trying to be helpful and cooperate, okay? And as a matter of fact, if you notice, across the street from the post office, now there is a, a mailbox. You actually can drive up, you know, going into Colum-, is it Columbus Street still? Columbus Street Ave, can drive up, and this is, is a little, you know, a duck nose.
Yeah.
So people don't even have to get out of the vehicle. They can just casually drop the mail into the mail, mail chute, and you can go on to this way. So then, you know, if they, if people are just gonna park across the street, run over the street, across the street to drop letters, they no longer have to do that. I have equipments out there on the right-hand side. They could easily maneuver into, right in front of the bank, and, and, and then deposit the, you know, the mail. And, and you hit it right in the head because right now it's all packaging businesses. Uh, seventy percent of, 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 of our mail volume right now is concentrating on packages. Yes, customers do have to walk into the front of the building with handfuls of packages standing in line, and, and I don't disagree with the chief accession about, well, we should build more post offices. Uh, absolutely, that's, that's, that would be great if they can do that, because I, I as a postmaster will love it, because when I see my customers standing in line, it, it cringe my, you know, it just make me feel bad. Because who at that kind of time to stand here just to mail a package? And I, and I sympathize with, with the constituents in Leamester. And the fact of the matter was, yeah, Adams Pharmacy was closed when I came here. I think it was, used to be like a satellite station, then the north part of the Leamester. It's not, I'm trying to, south part of Leamester, I'm sorry. And, um, and they used to have Veroni's pharmacies all over the place, taking mail in from Fitchburg and Leamester as well. So losing those satellite offices hurt, but, but...
They wouldn't be equipped, even a satellite office like that would never be equipped to take packages.
They are not. They're not equipped to take it. As a matter of fact, we actually entering the trial contract with Stable and tried to ease some of the traffic and having the, the Stable employees to deal with some of the packages, and, and the reality is the Stable employees are not equipped to take in those packages because of the Homeland Security Act. So that actually fell through, so we have to come back to the basic to the post office. Like I said, I would love, I, I agree with the chief. I would love to have three or four satellite offices, and they would solve all my, you know, wait time in line problems and customer frustrations. But unfortunately, in reality, we're losing three or four billion dollars a year. I mean, it's not a whole lot of money in the federal government, but it's still billions. When you lost three or four billion dollars per year, the chances are, we're gonna have to conserve. There's no, no difference in the federal government and our city government. We all, we only have a budget, it's, it's a pie, and you can only cut the pie to so many pieces. And I, and I sympathize with, with the chief and, and you folks, because you have yeoman's work that you need to do, because you only got so much money for your business, but everybody want a piece of the pie, for the budget. And same here, when I'm, when I'm, when my budget is being cut as a postmaster or Leamester, day in and day out. I am just, you know, doing the best I can to serve the customers, so everything I can for the customers, yes, I will champion for them. But then again, I, I don't, I don't disagree with the jaywalking problem, which probably existed a long, long time ago. And like, I'm just looking for some solutions here. If I'm gonna lose four spaces across the street to help the constituents, what can we do to compensate these people as well for everybody else's sake? That's all I, that's all I have. It's not a, you know, I'm not here to be a hot-nosed or anything, okay?
Thank you.
I thank you. Call you outside, Councilor Badanta?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilor Cormier?
Chief, not that I wanna beat this any further, but I, I will take exception to the, the statement that you made that speed is not a factor through downtown Leamester. Now, from where I live, I come up, and I'm going from Columbia crossing over Main to go onto Merrim, or the opposite way. It's a well-known fact, and nobody ever beeps their horn, but if you're waiting to make that crossover, when you get the green light, you count to three. Because there's always somebody in a pickup truck going in the opposite direction on Main Street, and they're going through the yellow light, they're going through the red light, and they're not slowing down for anything.
Are they speeding?
They're speeding.
In excess of the posted limit?
Oh, absolutely. They're, they're moving. They think they can make the light, they don't make it. So if you don't count to three, you're putting yourself in jeopardy.
There's a lot of intersections like that in Leamester. I understand that.
Okay. And I understand what you're saying, that you don't wanna take resources to enforce the jaywalking and doing that sort of thing. I get that. The police department has much more important things to, to worry about, and I understand that. I will though say that I do, um, most of my work is in Fitchburg. And they have a lot of people walking, they have the one-way on Main Street. And a couple of years ago, they started a program that about one day a month, they had a few officers and a few civilians get into the crosswalk, and the cars that didn't stop, they were ticketed. Now, I'm in Fitchburg four, five days a week. If you put one foot into a crosswalk in the city of Fitchburg, all you hear are tires screeching, everybody stops everywhere. They do not, as soon as you put one foot in that crosswalk. And that, and when you speak to the officers then, they say that was back to the time when we just, we would take one day a month, a few hours, four hours a day, and start handing out tickets at the most, at the busiest times. And it happened to be at the court, you know, near the courthouse in Fitchburg, and it happened to be near Espresso's, cause, so there was all that traffic there. So they knew the busiest times of day, and they did it, and now to this day, I'm telling you, you put one foot in that crosswalk and they stop. Everybody stops. So, again, and I get what you're saying, it's the jaywalking, so these people are jumping out of the car, they're not going to the crosswalk. But again, perhaps it is something that we can put up a sign and say, hey, listen, you are gonna get a fine if you don't use the crosswalks.
Signs are only as good as the enforcement behind them. And I'm always willing to accept new ideas and to try new things. But like I tell all the officers in my department, if you don't shoot me an email, it's gonna go in, win here and help the other, because I am busy. I, I, I'll say one thing else too, and I know this council's heard it from me before, and you're gonna hear it again. Speeding is demonstrable. We have a five-thousand-dollar piece of equipment that we can put up, and it tells us whether anybody's speeding, okay? There is speeding in the city of Leamester. My comment was, speeding is not the cause of the crashes in this city, and they are not. That's demonstrable. On a car accident form, they're required to come up with the contributing factor, and it's almost never speeding. It's inattention, the rear-end collisions, they're running red lights, and they are running red lights. And again, without insulting anybody, it takes forty hours in a police academy to be trained to judge speed from a stationary position on a moving vehicle. It takes forty hours to be certified to do that, okay? And all day long, I'm told by laypeople that are not law enforcement, that they know how fast everybody's going. And you don't, okay? You don't know how fast people are going. We, we demonstrate it for people on a routine basis. We take a radar gun out, we ask them how fast that person's going down the road. They will invariably say forty, forty-five miles per hour, and they're going thirty-two or thirty-three. Takes forty hours to train a police officer to learn how to judge speed. So, you, you can't do it that way. We, we, this department works on statistics. We have a five-thousand-dollar piece of equipment that this council allowed me to buy to judge, to, to, to make sure that we are distributing the resources of the police department in a proper manner. And again, and... And again, and hopefully nobody else has any more questions. This is, this is not my decision to make. I simply put the petition. It is the solution to the problem. And it is a permanent solution to the problem. And, and like I said earlier, it's, it's convenience versus public safety. And that's your decision to make, not, not mine.
Counselor Shoffler's effort. Did I see your hands as well?
Yeah, you did. You know, whether or not laypeople can actually pinpoint the speed. You know, I appreciate Counselor Cormier's comments because, you know, I know when people are going, I know it when I see it. So if I'm stuck at that light, which I am all the time, coming up from Columbia, heading up towards Marion Avenue. You know, I, I see people fly through that light, they're going through red lights and yellow lights. And may not be-
Absolutely.
Twenty-five miles an hour, but you know what? It's faster than they should be going. And oh, by the way, they are breaking the law. So in going back, I understand how pressed the police department is for resources. Believe me, I completely understand that. And I guess from my perspective, you know, jaywalking is a very minor, 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 you know, last thing on anybody's list, certainly that the police department, you know, would wanna take on. But having police visible, I actually saw two, two officers the other day walking. I think it was behind the library maybe. And I thought, this is great. I haven't seen, and maybe just because I haven't been in the right places, but I haven't seen police walking, you know, beats downtown in a very long time. And maybe they're doing it and maybe I just haven't seen it.
We have been walking since January 2nd.
That's great.
And, and, and very soon you'll see a request for more overtime from me. Because what we do now is we backfill the beat car. We have five beats, one through five. We backfill the beat car when we can and leave the walking beat alone. Officer DePerry has walked almost every single day. He bid a walking beat. It's a combination beat. It's not a walking beat. Their primary duty is to walk. He has walked almost every single day of his tour this year and it costs, it costs the city some money for some overtime. But the results are, are worth it.
Right. So, so is he primarily focused on downtown?
He is permanently focused on downtown. He's not the only one. Anybody that bid what, the cars are called six and sixteen. Anybody that bid that, bid that knowing they were gonna have to walk. But again, it's, it's, it's probably more complicated than, than tonight. But the decision was made by me to backfill, with the mayor's blessing, to backfill the one through five if they're out and leave six and or sixteen a sacrosanct to walk. Because it was necessary downtown.
Absolutely.
Necessary for a lot of reasons. And, and hopefully when the manpower finally comes back up, and I'm hoping now June or July, like I told the counsel last time I was here, I have nine people in the academy. I'm looking at a lateral transfer and I'm gonna probably be hiring another three just after the first of the year. Looks like the manpower might stabilize around July to the 60 that we're budgeted for. And then you will see a permanent walking beat without having to backfill the overtime.
So what kinds of results? Cause you mentioned that they get results downtown. What kind of results are the-
First of all, he has a, it doesn't always appear this way, but he has a really good problem. He has a really good handle on the homeless problem. He knows every single one of them. He knows what's going on. There's been, they handle the calls downtown. He has a really good relationship with the businesses downtown, so he knows what's going on with that. We, we were gonna try and attract some of the noise, attack some of the noise problems and some of the, and some of the things like jaywalking this summer. But again, you end up with manpower issues and it didn't, doesn't always get filled, so that didn't work out. And the response from the public downtown, just like you counselors, has been amazing. And sometimes that kinda cachet is worth it too.
There's no question about it. I think if people see, you know, officers patrolling on foot-
He loves it by the way.
No, that, that's a very good thing. My comment would be, you know what? I would love to see more of that. And I would love to see them enforcing things like jaywalking. I'd like to see them writing tickets for jaywalking. Sounds crazy, but you know what?
No, no, no.
Hey, this is, it's a problem.
He does parking tickets downtown, so.
Right, right. But parking tickets, you know, and he could enforce people, you know, if he's standing on the corner and he's watching people, you know, go through, run, ready, or yellow lights. I mean, that's something else. Having a person's presence there to actually look at and handle a variety of violations is, it would be a good thing. And I would include jaywalking in that because that's serious.
And again, that, that is the ultimate goal. The ultimate goal is to have permanent walking. As a matter of fact, I'm in discussion with the union now. Because the walking beat is gonna be bid as a Monday through Friday job, not on a four and two schedule. My intent is to change it so that Monday through Friday, he's consistently there. And, and it, you know, my, my idea is that it's gonna work out a lot better. And the idea is to have two of them and have them there all the time. They do walk in the afternoons too. I don't know if you've seen them at Carter Park at some of the band concerts during the summer and all that. They have been walking in the afternoon. The afternoon one, you don't see quite as much 'cause once the sun goes down, we tend to roll him back a little bit 'cause it gets a little more dangerous for a solo person. But yeah, that's, that's, that was a major goal this year, was to get that walking beat more consistent.
Good.
Counselor Dobrowski, did you also have a?
I just, chief, how long is the temporary ban going to last in your estimation?
The temporary ban's gonna be, be done if this counsel votes this ordinance down. Because really, it's only supposed to be 30 days at a time.
Oh, I see.
And I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm certainly not gonna leave a ban up in, in opposition to, to the counsel.
So it has, it has nothing to do with the construction?
It has nothing to do with, zero to do with the construction. There may have been times when we would've had to close it with construction. It was simply coincidental. That's all it was. We were walking out there in a downtown tour and I essentially begged the mayor to let me experiment with it, and he did. And, yeah, and it, if this counsel votes it down, it's gonna be lifted. That had nothing to do with the construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have any question? Counsel Freida?
I wasn't really gonna say anything, but-
But I brought up speeding?
I'm sorry?
But I brought up speeding?
No, well, I'll agree with everybody else. Speeding's an issue.
I didn't say it wasn't an issue. I just said it wasn't causing accidents. You guys are mishearing me a little bit.
I don't think we were talking about accidents though. Just trying to talk about the temperament of the city. And I think speeding is a big part of it. And even if, even if we can't judge, if you're four, five cars behind and you see these little, the little digital speed notices, you can see that the first three, four cars in front of you are going too fast. So somebody's speeding or they're not human beings, but they're machines that gear the, the speed.
The speeding in the city of Lummister, it's not as widespread as, as everybody believes. So I'm gonna stick to that till the day they cover the lid on it.
Well, and, and that's not what I was, you, you just asked me if it was speeding. I wasn't gonna say that. You just brought that up. But I was just gonna bring up the, the post office. I mean, it was mentioned a couple of times that they've outgrown their facilities since 1928. I'm not so sure that that, that's part of the problem. The city allowed Mr. Mike's to go next door, whether it was by right or not. You know how much traffic that generates?
Oh, yeah.
Watching people go in and out, getting a, a coffee and coming back out, getting gas, coming back out. That's a constant movement in and out of that building. And that's going in two directions. So that's, that brings a lot of traffic. We had the, the satellite, I actually worked with Mary Jane Simmons and the congressman at the time to put the satellite station in Esper Drug. That was, we didn't think we were gonna be able to pull it off, but we did. Only because Alan Esper took a, a very low amount of money to put that in there. And it worked for a long time. When he was closing, the post office wouldn't pay to go into another freestanding spot. There were many of them there. They wouldn't agree to do that. And there wasn't another storefront that would take the little amount of money that they wanted to pay. No offense to the post office, but they were really, I mean, nobody would take the responsibility of having the post office for what they wanted to pay for. So, I, I mean, I don't think we can blame the post office for increased activity. I mean, there's, there's a lot that went on around it. And on one side, we say we wanna see the city thriving, having a lot of people downtown and a lot of people walking. And now we're, we're talking about taking parking away. We're talking about jaywalking. So, I mean, there's a whole, there's no easy solution here. And I, and I think you're right. And, and whatever decision we make, I don't think we should be, I don't think we should be called public safety against convenience. I don't think that's gonna be the issue at all. I think there are a lot of things that, that enter into that, that argument. Because there's a lot of things that have happened in the city. So, I mean, I'm not sure what the solution is either, but there's jaywalking in a lot of areas of the city.
Permanent problems deserve permanent solutions.
See people trying to, trying to cross Route 12? When they're coming out of like the luxury box 'cause they have to park across the street 'cause there's no parking? I mean, that, that's like really thinking somebody's gonna get killed and somebody who isn't speeding but going too fast for the road?
Someone did get killed up there.
I, I mean, it-
Counselor, someone did get killed up there.
Yeah, that's, that's right. They have.
In the early morning, at daylight.
A couple people have, further down Central and, and up. So, I mean, trying to cross a highway, jaywalking that way, it, it's gonna start presenting itself as a problem.
It's a big city with a lot of cars. The volume is staggering. It's just staggering in the city. Again, with all due respect, I'll, I'll remind this counsel, I've lived in this city for 55 years, okay? You know, when I started driving, we had the Rotary downtown, okay? There's not a lot of people that remember that anymore. The volume in the city staggers the imagination and the roads were not constructed to deal with it. And it becomes my problem. It becomes the police department's problem. It does. And permanent, permanent problems need permanent solutions. Just can't keep throwing a cop at it, you know? It has to do with constructions of roads and, and where you put parking spaces and all that kinda stuff.
I think the old adage that they're saying in Boston now is that there's no rush hour traffic. It's all the time.
It's all the time, yeah.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Okay, I think we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now we have a seven o'clock hearing, which will be at just a little after eight. Counsel Dobrowski? Legal Affairs?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a hearing before the city council relative to amending chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning, by amending section 22 dash 50 dot 4 dot 1, common driveways by deleting the words, "shell service no more than two lots" and inserting "are not permitted." This is formerly Legal Affairs Petition 3517. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the counsel either in favor of or against this petition? Second time, is there any member of the audience who wishes to address the counsel either in favor of or against this second reading of the ordinance? Third and final time, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the counsel either for or against this petition? Seeing none, is there any member of the counsel who has any questions or comments at this time?
If I may, do we have any formal recommendations that need to be added at this point?
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I think this was a straight up or down vote. I have a draft ordinance that actually has been a lot more, a lot more work. And I, I think I see where Counsel Badanza was going with it. But it's been a lot more work than I actually anticipated.
Okay, thank you.
But as far as this goes, no, we, we voted it up or down the last time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, oh, Counsel Freida?
Yeah, through, through the chair, just to clarify, this is changing shared driveways to not being permitted.
Correct.
Just so people know that.
Anyone else? I declare the public hearing closed, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, at this time, we are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is to allow any person in the audience to speak on any matter listed on the council agenda. The city, the members of the city council will not be answering any questions, but will be listening to the opinions expressed by the speaker. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. The following people have signed up. Holly Kosky? Okay. All right, I'll move on to the other one and then we'll go back to our Carrie Mealy. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Carrie Mealy. I'm on 196 Day Street in Lummister. And I'm new to town politics and I've spent the last six months or so trying to educate myself about what's going on. And what I have learned over the summer in particular is about the importance of and rules around the use of, what is, the stabilization funds. And if I understand correctly, stabilization funds are intended for unexpected expenses such as overtime or snow removal or, you know, whatever comes up that can't be budgeted. So the question I have is why stabilization funds are required to pay or cover expenses associated with elections? Because if I'm not mistaken, elections are known events that occur annually. And we should have some general sense year by year of how much an election will cost to run. And so why isn't that a budgeted expense? Why does that need to come from stabilization? And similarly, with the use of stabilization funds for repairs to the, I, I think it was the Gallagher Building. I don't, I guess that comes from a revolving fund. So I just wanna make sure I understand the whole idea of stabilization funds correctly and how that money is supposed to be used and allocated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person is Holly Kosky.
Holly Kosky from Ringe, New Hampshire. I just wanted to say thank you for the thankless job you guys do and for, you know, sticking up for the, and trying at least to make everyone listen with the custodians. And then I have a question. Who gives out parking, parking tickets? Don't there, isn't there somebody that always walks around town giving out parking tickets? Shouldn't they maybe give out jaywalking tickets? I don't know. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, that's all that has signed up. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the public forum? Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Gary Zimmerman, Lynn Haven Road. I wasn't planning on talking, but all this stuff with the, across from the post office, I came up with some ideas and some comments. I think closing off that section is just gonna push people to one side or the other. Cause I know if I come downtown, again, knowing the traffic, I'm gonna pull in front of the old YMCA and then probably jaywalk going across. Cause I do that going to ABM if I need to go with insurance, if I can't go to the back, depending on where I'm heading. So I think that's just pushing things aside. Comment I made at the budget meeting about putting parking meters, if I do park in front of the YMCA and I'm going to the post office, I have more of a tendency to use the crosswalk because I go on the sidewalk to pay the meter. So if you put meters on that side, which gives revenue to the city, then maybe if they go onto the sidewalk, they might have a better sense. And if there's signs on the fence that Fidelity puts up at that walkway saying, going that way, maybe that'll put people to the, to the crosswalk. But I don't think closing that section's gonna do anything 'cause you jaywalk the other side. So it's just the amount of quantity of people going to the post office. The other thing about the post office, outliving, if it's a business, I'm wondering how much business they're losing for people not going to the post office because of their location and if they even had a thought about going to somewhere else. But I know there's a big cost behind that. As far as the police officers and not having funding or whatever, I mean, we have police details all over the place. So hiring someone extra for overtime, which people love their overtime, why not hire some? Cause again, if we do the enforcement, it's gonna stop and deter people from doing it, knowing, hey, downtown this week, we're giving out flyers that say, "Jaywalking's illegal. You're gonna get a hundred dollar fine. I don't know what the fine is for jaywalking." The following week, you give out the actual fines. And again, once you show the enforcement, 'cause that's what laws are for, is the enforcement. So stopping the parking downtown isn't necessarily solving the problem. I think it's pushing it somewhere else. So those are just my comments about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the public forum? Once again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the public forum? And for the third and final time, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. And at this point, the council will now stand back in session and we will move right into communications, beginning with C dash 13.
C-13, Dean J. Mazrela, mayor exempt Greg Chaplin purchasing agent from the conflict of interest law as provided for in Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 20B, as he will be taking a position at the Department of Public Works as a replacement snowplow operator on an as-needed basis.
Okay, and C dash 13 will be referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
First time on the agenda, Mr. President. Regular course.
C dash 13 has been given regular course. C dash 14.
C-14, relative to the appropriation of $60,000 to the sanitation and drainage expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization account.
C dash 14 is being referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar. Regular course, please.
Okay, and C dash 14 has been given regular course. Moving on to C dash 15.
C-15, relative to the appropriation of $45,000 to the library expense account, same to be transferred from the library state aid reserved for appropriations account.
C dash 15 is also referred to the chairman of finance.
Similar circumstance, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
C dash 15 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, 13 dash 18.
Thirteen eighteen, Pat Scuzzelli, his agent for Highland Manor Realty Trust, accept the deed for Katie Lane, a request that the street be taken by eminent domain by the City of Lemonster. Petitioner offers to pay any legal fees that may be incurred.
And thirteen dash eighteen will be referred to the Chair of City Property.
Regular course, Mr. President.
Okay.
I can refer that to the City Solicitor, please. And also the Building Department. And the Planning Board.
I think I know what you're going to say.
You do?
Yeah. It should be public service.
It should be Legal Affairs.
Legal Affairs? Oh, because it's eminent dom, they're asking for eminent domain? Okay. I was thinking public service.
That wasn't what I was going to say, but that's all right.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Council Frida.
Can I just add DPW to that?
On DPW, okay.
For the record, it doesn't matter at this point.
All right, Council.
I'll just repeat everything the council has said. My last one was notification to the neighbors.
Okay.
From Katie Lane.
Okay. I mean, I don't know.
What kind of notification?
It's not, it's not, what kind of notification were you thinking? A certified letter type of thing?
If I recall, and it might not even be the same neighbors now, but I think there were some major problems up there at one time with, with some of the neighbors and a developer. So if there, I think there were a couple of lawsuits, and if there were, then we should know that before that's even brought up. I mean, I'm going back away as the Wards Three Councilor, so it could be all new neighbors now, it's not an issue, but I think we need to know that.
Yeah, we should probably switch this to Legal Affairs. Okay. All right, so I'm going to refer this to Legal Affairs. Are you good with all of those? Regular course with the referral to City Solicitor, Planning Board, DPW, neighbors? And Building Department?
Yeah, those are appropriate.
Okay. All right, so thirteen dash eighteen will be given regular course with all those referrals that I just mentioned made. Moving on to.
Excuse me, do we have, did you say City Solicitor?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to appointments, and we do have one item under suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, if you want to read that.
Dear members of the City Council, please, please accept the following communication under suspension of the rules. I respectfully request the appointment of the following: Board of Appeals, alternate member term to expire four fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, Lee Barron, two seventy, Day Street, Lemonster, Mass.
Okay, and so all those in favor, first of all, is there any questions about suspending the rules on this, or any comment?
Do we know why?
Did he give an explanation?
Because they're not going to have a quorum. They have one that.
It's somebody that's sick. That's right, I read that. Somebody that's out ill.
If they don't get it.
They don't have an alternate now? Thought they had an alternate.
I don't think they do.
I don't know. But they said they need it for the meeting in next month, I guess.
Is there any other?
Mr. President, for the record, I believe Mr. Barron was an alternate for a long time.
Right.
So it's nice that he's willing to step up and help out again.
Right. Okay, is there any other question regarding the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, although, Council Feckley?
Would we be approving this tonight?
No, no, it's just going to get on the agenda. It missed the agenda on Thursday. That's really the issue. Yeah. And they, and they, and if they don't have another member on board by the end of November, which is the next meeting, they're not going to have a quorum, and, well, we know what happens with that, so. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the rules have been suspended, and this will be referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
So we have two appointments, Council Binge.
Well, at that, at this point, we're just gonna, we're just gonna probably regular course it?
Regular course.
We'll just regular course that one we just suspended the rules on. Okay. And I don't think there's any need for an interview. He's, he's served as an alternate before.
Okay.
Okay, unless you want him.
I feel comfortable enough. I, I personally know Mr. Barron, so.
Okay.
Unless, unless somebody else has an issue with not bringing him down. Okay.
Okay, all right, so that one has been given regular course. Moving on to the other appointment, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Agent Donald Bastarach, turn to expire April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, and this appointment is also referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Yes, Mr. President, first time on the agenda, regular course, and we will ask Mr. Bastarach down for an interview.
Okay, so this one's also been given regular course, and this candidate will be asked to come down for an interview. Moving on to items, our matters before the City Council, items under Legal Affairs, beginning with seven dash eighteen. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Officer Julio Ramos requests no parking anytime signs be placed on the east side of Main Street from Maryamav Avenue to Columbia Street. We had the Police Chief down this evening for an extended hearing. If I could do some quick subcommittee work, Mr. President.
Sure, absolutely.
Just start with Counselor Frida, your thoughts on this?
Thank you.
I'm ready. I'm ready.
I'm not, I'm not supportive of taking the parking spaces away. I mean, I know we have a problem there, but.
Council Marsha?
Through Chairman Opposition to the Petition.
Okay, Council Budanza?
Councilor Counselor Schaffel-Zephyr is next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going, doing the loop.
You know what? I am not going to support this either. I think that we need to address the problem, and I don't think that it is a permanent problem. I think it's something that needs to be managed appropriately by the people who are enforced, or who are charged with enforcing the law. So I will not support it.
Council Budanza?
I agree. I'm in opposition.
Okay. So the, I personally would defer to the police on this one, but the majority opinion is to deny petition seven eighteen.
Okay, so you've heard the majority of Legal Affairs is to deny seven dash eighteen. Is there any discussion? Council Budanza?
I take into account the Postmaster's position on this, and I think he made a very good point. Clearly, public safety is, is an issue always.
Absolutely.
But, you know, his, his customers coming north from the southern part of Lemonster, if there is no parking on that side of the street, we'll be apt or more apt to attempt to park in the other postal parking lot, which is very limited, five spaces, I think, is what he indicated with the handicap spot. And he's personally observed people backing into Main Street from his lot. That, that can't be very good. To me, perhaps even a more significant problem than the jaywalking. So that being said, with the fact that I agree with the Council at large that, you know, the laws need to be enforced. If we have a walking beat, and this is such a problem, and public, public safety is an issue, then let's, then let's enforce it. And I have seen this phenomenon, not just there downtown, but other places downtown. So let's take a look at enforcing it across the city. I know people use Bank of America, frequently parked on what would be the west side of Main Street and across wherever they're parked. So it's not just the post office. The post office, as, as the Postmaster indicated, is not the post office we knew a decade ago. There's people, if you go there on any given day and you want to mail a package, you might wait a half an hour. That line can be ten people deep. They're a busy place, and you can't just drop a package anywhere into a collection box. People are there with packages. They become a package service. Taking those four parking spaces away would dramatically impact the business there, and I'm opposed to it.
Is there any of this, Council Schaffel-Zephyr?
And I would also recommend that better signage be put in place. I don't know that there are any no jaywalking signs anywhere downtown. So I would like to see signs and, you know, warning that people will be fined.
All right, is there any other discussion in seven dash eight? Council Frida?
I don't disagree with the Council at large to my right. I think we need to double check to be sure we have an ordinance in place before we, before we suggest they be fined. I'm not sure we do.
Good point.
Maybe it's something we need to work on.
Good. We could fix that.
Okay, all right, is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of denying seven dash eighteen, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to two, seven dash eighteen has been denied. Okay, moving on to nine dash eighteen, is the Chairman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition nine dash eighteen, Officer Julio Ramos requests no parking signs be placed three hundred and six feet west from the intersection of Spruce Street, Spruce and Whitney Street on the north side, starting at pole number five and going one hundred feet to pole number four. The sign should read, "No parking Monday through Friday between the hours of eight AM until six PM." Officer Ramos submitted a letter to the council. I'll read that quickly. It's dated September twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, to the Honorable City Council. I am requesting no parking signs be placed three hundred and six feet west from the intersection of Spruce and Whitney Street on the north side, starting at pole number five, going one hundred feet to pole number four. Due to the increase in business on this street, individuals are forced to park their vehicles on the sides of the road. As a result, trucks making deliveries to eleven Spruce Street, Thermal Plastic Engineering Corporation, are unable to back into the loading docks. I believe this would alleviate the situation. The parking sign should read, "No parking Monday through Friday between the hours of eight AM until six PM." Mr., Mr. President, I would be in favor of granting this petition. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Okay, Council Frida?
I agree.
Council Marsha?
I agree.
Council Schaffel-Zephyr?
I agree.
Council Budanza?
Just, just a quick question. What street are these signs being placed on?
North side.
It says it.
Starting at pole number five, going one hundred feet to pole number four.
Says from the intersection of Spruce and Whitney, Whitney on the north side.
It doesn't say which street, though.
North side of what?
North side of what street?
Yeah.
Spruce.
And is Spruce Street over there?
The map has Spruce highlighted.
All right. I'm in favor, but I just wasn't sure what, what street they were talking about.
I'm assuming they're in the vicinity of the loading dock. Yeah.
That's the plan. So it's Spruce.
If somebody, do you mean, do we want to amend to make, make it clear, the north side of Spruce Street?
Probably wouldn't, wouldn't be a bad idea, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, of Spruce.
All right, do I have a motion then?
I'll move to amend.
Okay, so.
Go second.
In a second. Okay, all those in favor of amending nine dash, nine dash eighteen to read on the north side of Spruce Street? Please, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, that amendment has been made, so.
So the recommendation, Mr. President, is to grant petition nine eighteen as amended.
Okay, is there any discussion on nine dash eighteen as amended? Counselor Cormier?
Just quickly, I did, after this was appeared on the agenda for our last meeting, I did take a ride by there a few times during the day, different times, and there is a significant issue over there. They, it's a new influx of business over there. A lot of cars in that area now, so I think it's going to be, it's going to help them out significantly.
Okay, okay, all right. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting nine dash eighteen as amended, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, nine dash eighteen is granted. Moving on to eleven dash eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Petition eleven eighteen. Committee on Ordinance Review, amend Chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning by amending Section twenty-two dash fourteen, adoption and amendment. To require notification of a butters for zoning changes and the costs associated will be paid by the petitioner. We have a hearing scheduled for November thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, at seven o'clock PM, so the recommendation is further time.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of Legal Affairs to give this further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving eleven eighteen, eleven dash eighteen for the time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, eleven dash eighteen has been given further time. Moving on to the City of Lemonster's financial report. Is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. We began the current fiscal year with a balance in the stabilization fund of fourteen million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. All of the pending and approved communications from stabilization totaled two million, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars, leaving a balance of eleven million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
All right, so that is the financial report. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to items under finance, beginning with C dash ten. Is the Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash ten, relative to the appropriation of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars to the elections and registration expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. I, I know the clerk could probably back me up on this, but I'm sure some of this budget money is resulting from the Senate, special Senate election. We have two of them, right? We have a primary as well as a general election in December. And it would be my position to grant C dash ten, and I'll check with my committee members.
Absolutely.
Through the chair, I agree. Just one question for clarification for the lady that spoke in the public forum. Can you explain why this comes out of stabilization fund tonight?
It's a one-time expense. It wasn't, it was, we do have a budget for elections that we, you know, have annually, and we expect. The vacancy of the State Senate position necessitated a special election, so there's a, a primary election that's being held on November seventh. And a general election that was unanticipated, that'll be held on December seven?
Fifth.
December five.
Five. And that's what necessitated the additional unanticipated expense.
Okay, all right, so you've heard, thank you very much for that explanation as well. All right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash ten. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash ten, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C dash ten has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars be appropriated to the elections and registration expense account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request of the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, C dash ten has been adopted. Moving on to C dash eleven.
C dash eleven, relative to the appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the Highway Department overtime account, same to be transferred from the stabilization fund. I have a letter from the Director of Public Works, addressed to the mayor, dated October third, two thousand and seventeen. The Department of Public Works requests an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars to the highway overtime account. This account has been used this year to accomplish many extra projects, including drainage emergencies, as well as facade day trash and brush details by our men. We also need extra funding to facilitate the new LED lighting project. We are installing new ornamental lighting using city forces. We are waiting for the project to be bid. We would be glad to provide additional information or answer any questions that might be needed regarding this request. It would be my position to grant C dash eleven, and I'll check with my committee members.
Council Schaffel-Zephyr?
You know, at our last meeting, I think I had asked for more detail on this, fifty thousand dollars, a breakdown of the, the various projects, because they must have them by, I would imagine that they have a breakdown by the number of hours for each. And I did get, I got a copy of the same letter that was attached to the original communication, which doesn't really tell me anything. It's very general and vague. So, you know, I, I would actually like more information, more detailed information. I think it's reasonable to expect if there are all of these various projects, they have to be budgeted out in some kind of line item fashion, I'm guessing. So I would, I would request more detailed information.
I, I, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. I do think we were talking the last time we met about the next communication with respect to detailed information, but I have no problem with further time.
You know, I actually, through the chair, I think it was both, because I did get a copy of this dated October twentieth. It was, it was the two communications.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with further time.
Further time, thank you.
I'll check with Council Marsha. That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so you've heard the request on C dash eleven from the Finance Committee to give further time. Is there any discussion? Council Frida?
I agree with this, but I think it just contradicts the answer you just gave to, to the comment about a one, one-time expense. This clearly is the projects that they want to do, working, picking up Saturday trash and brush details. It's really not what the stabilization account is for. Be used, and I know when free cash becomes available, we usually replace it. That's probably a better explanation, but if you're looking for the explanation, it really doesn't, overtime should really not be part of stabilization. I agree with it. I agree with it. We're gonna put it back with, with free cash, but it's not answering the question of cash.
Well, it, stabilization goes for things beyond, um, emergencies. There are capital projects that can be used for, too, one-time expenses. But the detail that we have here, I agree with the Counselor at Large, um, that it's wanting. We, we really don't know exactly what, specifically what it's being used for, so I think further time is appropriate.
Okay. All right. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving C dash eleven further time, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by vote of eight to zero, C dash eleven has been given further time. Moving on to C dash twelve.
C dash twelve, relative to the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars to the Gallagher Building expense account, seemed to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. Um, with response to this, um, the last time on the agenda, we received a letter, uh, to Mayor Mazarella dated October twentieth from the Building Inspector, who is, uh, in charge of, um, maintaining, uh, the Gallagher Building. And that letter indicates a request was submitted for one hundred thousand dollars to be approved from the Gallagher Building expense account. These funds are needed to pay for necessary repairs and maintenance at the courthouse and to the Gallagher Building, more specifically, the heating system, ongoing renovations to the third floor, and general reoccurring expenses. Um, this is a, a revolving account, essentially where the rents are, are placed into, um, the expense account, and from time to time, um, that has to be tapped to pay the expenses of the building. Although it might, might be nice to get a little bit more detail, I, I am in favor of, um, approving C dash twelve. And I'll check with my committee members.
You know, I actually am not. It, we did ask for more information. We got a very generalized letter. A hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money. I realize that it's generated, it doesn't come from the general fund, it comes from a revolving account. But, you know, the heating system, ongoing renovations to the third floor, what are those? I mean, is anybody interested in the Gallagher Building and what's going on over there? I mean, I'm kinda curious. And then general recurring expenses. So I would ask again, they, they have to have some kind of line item budgets for these things, I'm imagining. If they've, I mean, if, I mean, these are projects, they're discreet, you know, projects. I mean, recurring expenses, that should be an easy thing to show. And if there is need for replacement of the heating system, I'm sure they have bids for that. Um, it's a hundred thousand dollars, it's a lot of money, so I, I would respectfully ask for more detail.
Okay. Okay, very good. I'll check with Counsel Marshian.
I don't have a problem with it, with that information forthcoming.
Okay.
I, I would, uh, so that, Mister President, the, um, recommendation of the committee is to approve C dash twelve, but I, I will, in deference to the Counselor at Large, follow this up and ask for, um, some more specific information with respect to, I agree, if there's some, uh, procurement here, there should be bid documents and something to give us a little bit better handle on what's going on there. So I will follow that up, but the recommendation of the committee is to approve.
Okay, so you've heard the recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash twelve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash twelve, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by vote of six to two, C dash twelve has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mister President. Order that the sum of one hundred thousand dollars be appropriated to the Gallagher Building expense account, seemed to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of six to two, C dash twelve has been adopted. Moving on to, um, items under city property, twelve dash eighteen. Mister Chairman, are you ready to report?
Thank you, Mister President. Richard M. Marshian, Festival Facilitator, requests the closure of the following streets from six AM to seven PM for the Silvian Anniversary, the Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival on September twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen, with a rain date of September twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen. The vicinity of West Street from school, uh, from West Street, from School Street to Main Street, Park Street from West Street intersection, and the Church Street vicinity to Main Street, the City Hall parking lot, the city parking lot adjacent to City Hall, located off West Street, the city parking lot defined spaces, located between the First Baptist Church and the First Church Unitary for Handicap Parking, and Church Street from Merrym Avenue to West Street, with, uh, we will still be able to have, um, altered egress patterns for public safety vehicles and business. I have contacted both of the churches to notify them, uh, that these were the dates. I haven't heard anything back from them. If I could just poll the committee through the chair, go to Counselor Badanza.
I'm in favor.
Thank you, Counsel, through the chair, Counsel Freda?
I'm okay with it.
Thank you. So the recommendation would be to grant.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation to grant twelve dash eighteen. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twelve to dash eighteen, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, twelve dash eighteen has been granted. Moving on to items under old business, we have one second reading of an ordinance. Uh, is the Chairman, Chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mister President. Second reading of an ordinance, amend chapter twenty-two of the revised ordinances entitled zoning by amending section twenty-two dash fifty dot four dot one, common driveways. By deleting the words, "Shall service no more than two lots," and inserting, "Are not permitted." Uh, we had a public hearing earlier this evening. The, my recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'll ask you to poll the committee.
Okay. Counsel Freda?
I agree.
Okay. Counsel Marshian?
I agree.
Counsel Badanza?
Agreed.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of this ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Freda?
Yea.
Counsel Dombrowski?
Yea.
Counsel Chafu Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Fekley?
Yea.
Counsel Badanza?
Yea.
Counsel Marshian?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The second reading of this ordinance has been adopted. Is there any other old business to come before the City Council? Counsel Fekley?
Just wanted to, um, mention that at the last meeting, I did, um, ask the city clerk to request some information of the mayor regarding the dam at Barrett Park, and we did receive a letter, um, October twentieth, Officer City Clerk, Dear Miss Bouchard, I am in receipt of your letter dated October eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, requesting an update on plans for repairing the Colburn Pond Dam at Barrett Park. Please note, we will be hiring an engineer to draft a design, and will then prepare to put the project out to bid. Thank you for your attention, Cecily Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor. So, I want to thank the mayor for that information.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there any other old business? Counsel Chafu Zephyr?
Yep. Thank you very much. We, um, in early December, I think, had, um, sent a communication to the mayor as chairperson of the school committee, asking for a joint meeting, and subsequent to that, September twenty-fifth, we did get a letter from Mister Jollicker, the superintendent, indicating that the school department was in the process of finalizing the line item budget for two thousand and eighteen in preparation for the joint meeting. So at this point, it's a month later, I'd like to follow up and ask again for a joint meeting, so that we can, um, you know, discuss the budget and what the, um, the, the existing budget and the implications and impact that that's actually had on the school year, now that school's in session.
I agree. And hopefully, um, you know, moving into November, we should have, I would think we should have that, because I think they wait for finalized numbers by October, so hopefully we'll be ready to go with that in November.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Is there any other old business? Counsel Badanza?
Um, I should schedule a, a committee, subcommittee meeting on, um, unaccepted street committee. Um, we had a meeting last week and, uh, issued a draft report. I think we need just one additional meeting, um, and we'll finalize our report, which will essentially conclude, uh, the subcommittee business, so we just need to pick a meeting, a meeting date. Um, I'm available to do it, um, sometime next week, if my committee members, if that works with my committee members, and anybody else that would like to attend. I don't know if there's a particular day that works better. I don't know, is November first? Um, that's a Wednesday?
Wednesday's quick.
Um, is it, time, five-thirty, okay? All right. Five-thirty on November one, and the, the agenda would be, uh, to, uh, vote on a final report of the, of the, um, subcommittee.
Okay.
I have also had the city clerk distribute, um, a copy of the draft report, which is now public record, uh, to all of the, uh, counselors.
Okay. All right. Um, is there any other old business to come before the City Council? Okay, under, we have a couple of items under new business. Uh, we have two election orders, and I will refer to the first election order, which is the municipal election, to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you. City of Leominster Municipal Election Order, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, ordered that the city clerk be and she hereby is authorized and directed to notify and warn the voters of the City of Leominster to assemble in their respective polling places in the several wards and precincts of the city designated by the City Council as follows. Ward one A, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way. Ward one B, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way. Ward one C, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way. Ward two A, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward two B, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward two C, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward three A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street. Ward three B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street. Ward three C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street. Ward four A, Senior Citizen Drop-In Center, five Pond Street. Ward four B, Leominster Veterans Quarters, one hundred West Street. Ward four C, Leominster Veterans Quarters, one hundred West Street. Ward five A, Auditorium, City Hall, twenty-five West Street. Ward five B, Auditorium, City Hall, twenty-five West Street. Ward five C, First Baptist Church of Leominster, twenty-three West Street. On Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, then and there for the purpose of giving in their votes for the election of candidates for the following officers: mayor, four councils at large, one counselor for each ward, three school committee members at large, one school committee member for each ward, all for terms of two years, beginning on the first Monday in January, two thousand and eighteen. And it is further ordered that the polls shall be opened at seven AM and closed at eight PM, and that notice shall be given by publication of this order in a conspicuous place in the office of the city clerk. Per order, Leominster City Council, true copy attest, Linnae Bouchard, City Clerk.
And I take it your recommendation is to grant, or to adopt the, uh, the election order?
The election order.
Counsel Marshian?
I agree, thank you.
Okay. All right, so you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to adopt the election order. Is there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the municipal election order, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by vote of eight to zero, that election order has been adopted, and we also have another election order for the state, special state primary.
City of Leominster Special State Primary Election Order, November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, ordered that the city clerk be and she hereby is authorized and directed to notify and warn the voters of the City of Leominster to assemble in their respective polling places in the several wards and precincts of the city designated by the City Council as followers. Ward one A, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way. Ward one B, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way. Ward one C, Skyview Middle School, five hundred Kennedy Way. Ward two A, Southeast Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward two B, Southeast Elementary School, ninety-four, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward two C, Southeast Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Actually, that should be Francis Drake Elementary School. Right. So, uh, correction, ward two A, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward two B, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward two C, Francis Drake Elementary School, ninety-five Viscloide Avenue. Ward three A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street. Ward three B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street. Ward three C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, four fifty-six Litchfield Street. Ward four A, Senior Citizen Drop-In Center, five Pond Street. Ward four B, Leominster Veterans Quarters, one hundred West Street. Ward four C, Leominster Veterans Quarters, one hundred West Street. Ward five A, Auditorium, City Hall, twenty-five West Street. Ward five B, Auditorium, City Hall, twenty-five West Street. Ward five C, First Baptist Church of Leominster, twenty-three West Street. On Tuesday, the seventh day of November, two thousand and seventeen, then and there for the purpose of casting their votes in the special state primaries for candidates of political parties for the office of Senator in General Court for the Worcester and Middlesex District. And it is further ordered that the polls shall be opened at seven AM and closed at eight PM, and that notice shall be given by publication of this order in a conspicuous place in the office of the city clerk. Per order, Leominster City Council, true copy attest, Linnae Bouchard, City Clerk. Uh, Mister President, should we amend the election order?
Should we amend that? Or, I mean, it's, the address is correct, right?
Okay.
The address is correct, so.
Okay, I will go by this. And, uh, yes, my, uh, recommendation would be to grant the special state primary election order.
Counsel Marshian?
Through the chair, I agree.
Okay, all right. So you've heard the recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant this election order. Is there any questions or comments? Counselor Fekley?
I just have one comment before we approve this, that I just want to make it very clear to everybody that it's two separate elections, a municipal election and a state election. So it'll be two separate elections on November seventh.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of, uh, granting this election order, or, I guess, accepting it, uh, please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, this election order has been adopted. Is there any other new business to come before the City Council? Seeing none, is there anything to come under the community calendar? Counsel Marshian?
Just start planning, mark, mark the dates as we crawl into November in another few days, just, this weather's incredible, but Thanksgiving is approaching. And on November twenty-second, uh, in collaboration between the Leominster Football Blue Devils Club and the Elks, there will be a Thanksgiving banquet, which is a, a tradition that's hap- taken place for a long time, um, right at the Elks on North Main Street. Tickets are available. It's not just, uh, the football players and their families, it's open to the general public. Um, one of the things that's interesting is this year, we have the former PGA President, class of nineteen seventy-two, Jimmy Remy, who'll be the guest speaker. So if you'd like to come down and, and listen to him, uh, his speech to the kids, and enjoy some goodwill and have some fun, it's a ham dinner, um, so we won't be taking away from your turkey treats on Thursday, and it's from five-thirty to seven-thirty, uh, with the, uh, doors opening at five o'clock. You need to purchase tickets, you could do that by contacting me through the clerk's office, they'll give you the phone number. Um, also, on November seventeenth, it's a chicken bowl, will be taking place this year at Doyle Field between Fitchburg and Leominster High School, the junior varsity level, and it's a very special night for everyone to kind of get pumped up for the Thanksgiving game, but, and most importantly, uh, that evening, the community has come together and we're dedicating a bench to Michael Austin, and so we're gonna have the ceremony that night, so if you can mark the calendar, uh, just kind of plug it in. We're not sure if it's gonna take place at halftime or before the game, and we'll figure that out as we get closer to it, so I'm very, very proud of the Doyle Field Foundation and, uh, the youth football program, and Pop Warner for stepping up and helping us, but we're, we also, we need to raise like five thousand dollars real fast, and anyone that's an alumni, um, or would like to make a contribution, you can make the checks payable payable to the Leominster Blue Devil Football Club, or just use the acronym. And our P.O. box at the post office is three, four, five, right here in Leominster, and we will send you a rec, an acknowledgement of your donation, and we are a 501(c), so it is tax deduction as well. But you can actually contact me, and again, you can give my phone number through the Clerk's office, okay? So that's happening, and I know.
I'm sorry, what night is that again?
That's gonna be on November seventeenth, which is the Friday night.
Okay.
And then on Saturday night, Counselor Bonanza has a pretty important gig, so if I can defer it to him, maybe he can shed some light, get some patrons for that one as well.
My, my football seminar?
Yep. Throw that in there too.
November, November eighth, which I believe is a Wednesday, and November ninth, I'll be doing a football seminar at the Leominster Public Library from seven o'clock to eight-thirty. The nights aren't dependent upon each other. The subject matter is a little different each night. You can go to one or both, they're free. The principle is for football fans to sort of broaden their knowledge with respect to all aspects of the game, from the history of the game to the NFL collective bargaining agreement, to the rules of the game, situational football, NFL playbooks, agency, you name it. And on Saturday, I think I'm pretty much committed, it looks like it's gonna be a good day, to doing a tour of Pine Grove burial ground at the junction of Route twelve and Route thirteen, starting, I think, at ten o'clock in the morning. I will announce it on social media the next day or two and confirm it. Generated a little interest already in people to see if people are interested. I've done them in the past. It's a fascinating place, beautiful place this time of year, so if, keep your eye out on social media if you want to attend. Looks like I'll be doing it on Saturday morning.
I'd throw it back to him for November eighteenth also. That's the Hall of Fame banquet.
Oh, that's right. Yeah. On November eighteenth at five o'clock, we'll be conducting the Leominster Football Hall of Fame banquet. We have a number of inductees, contributors, and the nineteen eighty-one team going to be enshrined. It's at the Doubletree on Erdman Way. Tickets are forty dollars. They are available at the Carol's Insurance on North Main Street, or my office at thirty-six School Street. Should be a great night, usually is, and we'd love to have as many people as who would like to attend.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else under the Counsel, Counsel Frida?
Just to fall in line with all the football stuff, breakfast with the bins is the nineteenth, Sunday the nineteenth, starting at eight o'clock. I can't remember the year, but I'm, I'm thinking it's close to twenty-four or twenty-five. Might even be more than that.
I think it is.
Uh-huh.
I think it's like twenty-six.
Yeah, I think so. It's up there. I forgot the exact date.
You guys beat Starburst by a year, and they beat GIA Festival by a year, I think.
I don't know. I've been there for all of them, so I just lose track. And that will be at Leominster High this year. So it's a great event, joint between the Fitchburg and Leominster Rotary Clubs, alternating every year, so I think the tickets are still the same.